All right. Let me say good afternoon, or good morning still to everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, Sarah.
Susan.
Susan, excuse me.
That's okay.
It's an S.
That's funny. That's funny.
It's an S. Thank you, Susan, for facilitating this for us. We appreciate the opportunity to be educated about the happenings within the City of Brookhaven. And also thank staff, those of you here, Becky, Meg, and I haven't met the gentleman yet, but I'm sure we'll get a chance to meet him. I'd like to call the work session to order. Today is July 15, 2013. This is our work session for the Planning Commission for the City of Brookhaven. And we'll do a roll call at this time. Stan Stegall, our chairman, is not here, so I'm sitting in his day as vice chair for the Planning Commission. Shannon Cameron.
Present.
Jack Hundren. Not here. Adrian Smith.
Just entered.
Adrian, just entered. Jack, just entered.
Just say present.
Just say present. Present. Good, good. John Funny, vice chair here. Rob Frankel.
Here.
And John Hess. He's not here. All right, well, we have those of you here for this work session. We're just getting started, so thank you.
Thank you for starting us.
No, no, no problem. Just getting started. Organizational and procedural items, anything?
First, I'd like for the commission to meet our staff. This is John Olson. He is one of our planners. As you know, you all know Howard. Howard's on vacation, so John is sitting in for Howard today. So it's nice for you to see other people that are working behind the scenes. And then Becky Apter is our admin assistant. She's been here three weeks now?
No, I think this is my fifth.
Your fifth week? That's a time clock on your left side.
Becky, what's your last name?
Apter.
Apter.
A-P-T-E-R. So if you ever need anything, you can't find me. You can email her or call her. And your number is?
0582.
So if you see an email coming from Becky, you'll know who it is. And if you see an email coming from John, you'll know who that is. Another item is to kind of just, I will email this to you, but this is our schedule. We did, you know, we're trying to accommodate your request to have separate work sessions. So, and I know there are some of you that aren't going to be able to attend an event that you cannot attend. We are going to have a work session one hour prior to the public hearing night to accommodate you.
Can we use Outlook to schedule these to make it easier for you guys to track who will be attending and who won't be, as well as for us to all have it in our calendars?
We can do that.
I mean, it just seems easier, I want Outlook, just to have it done, send them all out. We can accept whatever. And then you guys don't have to call and chase, and there's not any strings.
We can do that. I'm not sure if everybody uses that tool, but we can certainly use that as an option. And then we can follow up at most at time. So Jack, or Ren.
I don't, but you know, I use ICS.
What's the same?
ICS, so I think it's the same thing in a way.
And also Shannon had made the request to find out when the terms were for each of you. So I did get that from our city clerk and pass that out as well, so you can see when your term expiration is. And I will email this information to you as well, but just so you have it. Thank you. Wanted to know for planning purposes.
Well, I want to know when I'm going to be retired.
So that is it for the organizational and procedural items at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Any unfinished business? Unfinished business? And there's another training session, or should I say work session, on Thursday, July 18th at 6:00 PM, which will be held at the courtroom, I think.
Right. And that's generally established for those that were not able to attend today.
Okay. All right, very good. We want to thank Susan also and the city for supplying lunch for us. Lunch is here, so if you can, talk and eat. Not at the same time. Susan, I think it's okay for them to-
Sure.
-grab their lunch also?
Just, you know, at any time you want to come over and pick it up. It's up to you.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead to our new business here, new unfinished business. It's a rezoning ordinance, IG number 1113, RZ13-05, consideration of rezoning of Century Center Office Park to PC3 Pedestrian Community District located off of Claremont Road and landlords 185, 186, 201, 203, and 204, which is in the 18th district of DeKalb County, Georgia. Susan, would you like to go ahead and share with us?
Sure, I'll give you, I won't give you like, you know, every single line of the staff report, but you do have it to that eight post call. This particular piece of property is, a piece of property that is proposed for annexation. It's about 100 acres. So the special call hearing that you have on Thursday is for purposes of the Planning Commission to provide the recommendation for the rezoning that the city has initiated. This particular annexation is actually being done by the 100% method. In other words, the people that own the property, they're petitioned the city to come into the city. We didn't go try to bring them in. They asked to come into the city. So the annexation law indicates that you go through the annexation process, you consider the zoning, except for the final vote. And the final vote will actually be held by the council on Tuesday, the 23rd. So the steps are that the Planning Commission will hear the zoning on Thursday, the 18th. The city council will hear the annexation and the zoning on Monday for first read. They will hear the annexation and the zoning on Tuesday for second read. So that would be the process.
Monday, the?
The 22nd.
Okay.
And then Tuesday, the 23rd of July.
Bill, legal, Bill has reviewed that we can make an opinion prior to this being annexed?
That is what the annexation law requires. Yes, yes.
Okay. Will Bill be there on Thursday night?
No.
Can we request that the city have legal representation here?
We can request that. I'm not sure that Bill would be the attorney that was there. I can pass that request along.
Okay.
This has not been included in your packet, and I'll pass this out as well. It kind of shows you the relationship of the property under zoning to Brookhaven and DeKalb County and proximity to Shannon and Doorville, so you can kind of see where it sits. I hope you have a better idea of what you're looking at.
Thank you.
All of the streets within Century Center are private. The main road, entry road, off of Claremont, obviously is public, but there is entrance off of Claremont Road and then Century Boulevard runs off of Claremont Road. And then the eastern side of the property under consideration borders the I-85 access road and Interstate 85.
And the unshaded corner there is at the Sam's Club and the McDonald's?
To the south, there is Sam's Club, Sam's Club, a warehouse, and McDonald's is in this area.
The self-storage warehouse?
Yes.
So that's high with-
Correct.
The little sliver that fronts Claremont?
This sliver?
Yes.
That's actually a roadway, and it takes you back into, I know this is hard to see, but as you come into this sliver, that's actually a driveway.
No, I mean the white section below it.
There's a little white-
Right above the C and Claremont Road.
Right above the C and Claremont Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that white portion of it.
Is there a parcel left out?
This piece right here?
This section right here?
Yeah, but isn't that this?
That's out. Let me double check that. I think those may be some office condos, and then the Gables are out. And those are not, and those are not in.
So the Sam Warehouse, the McDonald's, and whatever is in that little block spot, they're not in?
Right. And then the Gables apartments are not in.
Where's the Gables? The Gables is behind the gas station on the north, south side of our town.
If you go to page two on your report, if you look directly above this area, the Gables is right here. You see what I'm saying? Right, right in this area is where the Gables are. And then there's kind of an enclave here of residential, single-family residential and the apartments right here. So basically, I don't really want to read the report, but it's probably better to kind of go through bits and pieces of it. On July 1st, the property owners of the area filed a request for annexation. And on the same date, the city served notice to DeKalb County that we had the intent to annex the property. And that process then promulgates that you go through the zoning process, which requires zoning procedures. So you ask the Planning Commission or the recommended body, charged with providing the recommendation, to take forward to the city council. The city did initiate the zoning. We did initiate zoning to PC3. We took a look at all of the development that is on Century Center's property now, and looked at what their future proposal was, and felt that PC3 was probably the best zoning to apply to the property for broad uses and flexibility of design. And also to be consistent with the comprehensive plan that we adopted from DeKalb County that we brought over to apply to the city of Brookhaven. And the PC3 zoning district recognizes the existing built environment, provides zoning to accommodate future requests and redevelopment, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Susan, so for our clarity, the annexation is not a subject for us. It's just, it's only the rezoning of land use-
Correct.
-on what the city would intend to be in place if it's annexed.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Everybody, everybody's on board with that? Okay. So we could be doing something, and the annexation could fail in city council, but we've done our duty of making sure they have the right zoning?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, when the property owner submitted its intent for annexation, does that include a recommendation or requested zoning? Do they say we want to be a part of City of Brookhaven, and we want to have XYZ type of zoning, or two totally separate things?
Two totally separate things. They said, we'd like to be annexed. This is our intent to be annexed. This is our intent of intended purpose, but the city initiated the zoning. And we had to look at what was there and what was the most appropriate zoning, given the built environment and the future use of the property.
And as the city go through their comp plan process later this year, those property owners could be involved in voicing their vision for that area, which could modify that land use later this year in the comp plan development process?
Well, sure. The comprehensive planning process, because DeKalb County is so large, it's a broader view. And as we get into a smaller view of the city, we can look at areas in a more concentrated basis than the county did. However, the comp plan for the county and the zoning proposed here do coincide and are consistent, and the identified uses that are existing and proposed would be compliant.
Do we have any reason to believe that the property owner would contest the recommended zoning?
No, we do not.
Because we're following what's in the land use plan for the comp plan.
Okay. The master plan on packet page five here that's shown, is that, what are we looking at? Is that the future contemplated uses as well as existing? Or like, for example, POD 3 says existing buildings, 10,000 square foot service center, surface parking lot. But what zoning by annexation presumably would be permitted to 300,000 square foot Class A office building to 12 stories? Is the graphic showing us that the office building is potentially?
It's actually showing you existing buildings.
Okay.
It's showing you existing buildings. And then, and then the language is for contemplated uses in the future. For example, if you look at-
Language, but not visuals?
Right.
Okay.
For example, if you look at POD 5, that, that's the only one that remains as is. That's the Marriott. That's not going to change. But the remaining other pods are either going to be a combination of what's there or redevelopment, or there's a plan for recognizing what's there and for future redevelopment. But POD 5 is the one that will remain as is, as it is the Marriott.
And they haven't thought through that fully yet, what the layout could look like?
No, no.
I think as developers show up, they will come to the table with a development plan and basically follow the guidelines that have been set up here, but yeah.
And that's correct. And one of the reasons for the condition, let me see, condition number on the last page of your staff report. Actually, all four of those conditions kind of point to the fact that there's going to be, as they move forward with development or redevelopment, they're going to have to be meeting with the staff. We're going to have to look at all of the different aspects to make sure that is it in substantial accordance with its plan, meeting all requirements of pedestrian community district, recognizing any permits or standards that were approved previously by DeKalb County, and then implementing and interpreting the plan in conjunction with the ordinance that's going to be left to the staff to make sure it gets through the process and that it's filled correctly.
Susan, and then I'll come to you. One quick question for clarity for the commission. As they have been identified as adjacent land use, IG land, adjacent land analysis, what have you heard from the public with respect to what's going on in their neighborhood? And I say that in our preference statement with, education is probably going to be the biggest thing that has to happen for the adjacent property owner, to make them realize that areas are going to change, it's going to revitalize, some areas will remain the same, but based upon this petition that came from property owners, the city is only trying to address what's within this area and nothing outside of the city.
Right.
So how do, how do we educate the public to say, some of you may not like this, some of you may like it, what we're trying to do is make it a very complete community, so it's walkable, livable, and the uses are there so that they can have convenient access to a variety of uses? What, one, what are you hearing from adjacent property owners being that they're identified? And two, what's being done to educate them about this process?
Well, I'm going to ask John a question in just a second. We collectively, from a staff perspective, have not had, we've had very limited phone calls. We, you know, posted this on the web, we posted the property. We were able to acquire a database from DeKalb County and send the notices out to those property owners that were adjacent. Because it was county tax records, we didn't have the information, so we were able to acquire that from DeKalb County. So we did send those notices out to adjacent property owners. And I know that, I think John received a phone call and went out because someone thought that maybe one of the public hearing signs was incorrect, and he had to verify that. I don't know if he made any comments to you about the development itself. I don't know whether he was for it or against it, but we haven't had calls either way unless that call was more or less, I don't know if he, if he made a comment to you about it.
So the sign, was it correct?
There was one sign.
Okay.
But we fixed that.
Okay. Was it done with the legal required on the time, or did we fall within the window?
Believe it was.
We had 36 signs posted on the property.
Okay.
So it was due notice, and the ads-
I just don't want somebody to show up and say, you didn't notify me, that sign was wrong, and nothing told you. I just didn't want that.
I'm speaking as a resident. I'm actually a neighbor of this property, driving by.
You're the public!
So the signs are within 100 feet of each other, and they're everywhere, so.
So we did, we put up 36 signs.
I drove by this weekend. It was like, okay, I see it.
Got the message? You got the message? Good job.
Is the existing zoning, zoning more or less restrictive as relates to the intensity of development as what we're proposing with PC3?
That's kind of, that's difficult to answer, because the county zoning is O-I and O-D. However, the O-I and O-D zoning on the property do not allow us there. So they had to go through a SLUP, a special range use permit process, to be able to have more than what the existing zoning allows.
Can you repeat that, with the O-I?
The O-I, office institutional, and O-D, office distribution zoning, don't exactly allow the intensity of development that's on the property now.
That's a right there.
So this is a non-diforming use?
No. So the county went through a public hearing process to allow a SLUP, which is a special range use permit, to allow them to have more density and more height than what that underlying zoning allows. So the, a lot of the records that were in the county, we don't necessarily have all of the records from the county. So the PC3 zoning allows for this development, this existing built environment and the proposed developments per POD without a SLUP, in accordance with the nature and additional requirements of PC3.
So in a way, it's correct.
Correct.
Okay. But, and then we'll go to Jack. I want to make certain that we hear what Susan is saying. The current land use at the county is O-I.
And O-D.
And O-D.
Zoning.
Zoning. So I think it's important for us to understand, when you look at that type of zoning, you can put industrialized stuff there, you can put environmentally unfriendly stuff there that falls within a category. So when you compare it to, well, I wouldn't say compare, when you analyze it to, the community as a whole, the city as a whole, has to look at what are the benefits and which one would be best used for that location. So let's make sure we hear. I'm just putting facts out there so that we fully understand, because questions are going to come to us as relates to what can we do now based on land use, and what can we do under this category?
Along the lines of what Commissioner Frankel was saying, maybe just a general recommendation or request, in cases like this, we have staff recommendation, and it's a, it's a net new classification that we're proposing here. Can we get a printout of the code and what the ordinance language looks like and put that back in the packet before you even link to it?
Sure. And we can also tell you where it is. If you go on the city's website, on the front page, the chapter 27, if you, you'll see a link that says code of ordinances. Chapter 27 is the zoning ordinance. And if you click on that tool, it's all there in chapter 27. And if you, and if you right-click, you can actually do a search. If you put a word in, you can actually, it's searchable.
Okay, Jack, I'm sorry.
Your hand's going to fall down then.
Can I get on the web here? Do you have a guest access that I can place? I have the stuff, but I can't access it right now.
I can get an IT person to, Becky can get an IT person to-
I can see a password, something which wifi. I mean, I've read the code, and I think it's pretty clear, this is going to allow a very big increase in development intensity. Really, it's providing a huge, tens of millions of dollars worth of entitlement to the property owners by going to PC3 ultimately, which I really don't personally have a problem with, because I think this is located along I-85, Claremont, and some things like that, that it might be very appropriate, and it can create a whole new town center there.
Right.
So, you know, I don't have a problem with that concept myself. However, I do have some real questions about, you know, being consistent and thorough in applying this ordinance. For example, PC3, one of the very first things, this is, this zoning, the first thing you have to do is submit a comprehensive site plan, show all the, everything from building density, sidewalks, and a complete multimodal plan. I mean, this is a pedestrian community district, so there's a real emphasis on how are you tying this all together? Where is your mixed-use multi, your urban center? What's your plan? In other words, you can't do this zoning without a comprehensive, a master plan showing how it's really a pedestrian community district. So I guess it's impossible to do that at this point, because what's there, while it's some of the density and some reflects PC, it's not really at this point a bona fide PC3 district either.
And that's part of the reason for condition number two in the staff report, which says, pedestrian community district development aspects pertaining to ownership based on transportation and stormwater management practices shall be executed by the developer in conjunction with the community development director. So that's part of the reason for that condition being in there, so that we get a more detailed plan as opposed to before.
In fact, I guess I would like to see that much stronger and say this zoning, is this is PC3 conditional? And the condition is that before any redevelopment occurs at the site, they have to submit and have approved, probably by the planning commission as well as by the city council, the comprehensive plan, that's, you know, the comprehensive site plan that's specified in the zoning ordinance. In other words-
This is PC3 conditional. If you recommend approval or the council approves it, it would be with conditions.
Then maybe condition five could be, be for, you know, I mean, frankly, this is a huge entitlement. We're giving them a lot of money. But again, I don't think it's inappropriate necessarily for this parcel, given where it is. But by all means, we should be aware of that, and we should not feel bashful about requiring a comprehensive site plan that addresses all the issues. And if anybody can pull up the zoning ordinance, you know, there's a list of 12 or 14 or something like that, and the items that have to be shown as-
Okay. And as this is a planning commission work session, let's just be mindful that we're not drawing conclusions. We're having a conversation, you're not forming an opinion, but you're putting what's in there.
Jack, we need to understand that it sounds like you're saying after, if this is successful, and a developer shows up, you want to make certain that there's a fully developed plan, master plan of that area they look to develop, to make sure it's compliant with the PC3?
Exactly.
Okay. And I think that has to come back to the planning commission. You're exactly right. Every plan or every development?
No, sir.
That's not within the current zoning?
No, sir.
Okay, well then, I see your point. We would want to make sure that it's strengthened to the point where, well, it's going to be on Susan's desk.
That's the purpose of condition number two.
Susan's will have to make certain that, and Becky, that as it shows up, it follows all the I's, dot all the I's, and T's according to PC3, and they can't deviate from that. If they want to deviate, Susan's going to say, planning commission, will probably say, no, because, I mean, I'm just saying, we want to make sure it follows in PC3.
She might say, it might be a ZBA issue, you know, you want to do this, you have to go get variances X, Y, and Z. And I don't know if legally, and this would be useful to have an attorney present, I'm not sure if legally we could even make it a condition that the site plan would have to come back for approval before the planning commission and city council?
If it's within the current guidelines and the current zoning, it doesn't have to come back before us.
That's correct.
Right, they can just, Susan can decide it, however, and it's approved. If it deviates from any of the land use zoning requirements, it has to come back to this commission to make sure. Because all we're doing is looking at whatever is coming before us, to make sure that it's following the law of the land as it's already written out. Or if it's deviating, we have to make a determination on how it is going to fit within the context of the city, based upon the other parameters that goes into the decision-making process.
You're looking at, is this an appropriate zoning for this piece of land? Is it compatible with what's around it? Does the property have economic uses as presently zoned? Is this about, is this an viable zoning for this area and providing a right of access to the council? And you can propose recommended conditions above and beyond the form that are in here.
Just to clarify, the PC3, the depth of possibilities of the PC3, is that greater than what is illustrated here on the text referenced on the graphic? In other words, Century Center is suggesting that the future of the site could include these additional buildings. Does PC3, does PC3 grant them additional density of development beyond what they're just forecasting here?
No, their, their proposal here, they would be subject to substantial accordance with this plan that you have there before you.
Okay. So substantial accordance with this plan, so if PC3 allowed stadium, I bet it does, but in other words, that wouldn't be an approvable item?
This plan identifies mixed use, multifamily, office, hotel, a future hotel. The whole purpose of this plan is to identify the fact that there's a possibility of redevelopment here. Some of these buildings are 50 years old, but there is not a plan for stadium here. Some of these buildings are 50 years old, um, but there is not a plan for stadium here. I know that was an extreme example, but there is no, no plan for stadium.
Would that be allowed in the future?
No.
There you go. It's right.
That was quoted. That was the example.
Under the de cab, O-I-O-D or the slot that was approved, um, I know there are a couple of federal agencies in here, is there helicopter access permitted, landing access permitted here? Is there a helipad anywhere?
Um, I know that there is a, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if the flight path requirements are, um, but, but if there.
I just remember for some reason I thought I saw a helicopter land in the parking lot when, um, there was the escapee years ago.
Oh, under emergency situation, helicopters can make use of available space.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure if that was just, that's where they parked them and it's the FBI's offices.
Right. And they are still there in the Drug Enforcement Agency.
IRS is still there. Uh, Jack.
With the zoning ordinance, also, is the intent that these remain private roads? Cause I think under PC three, it says, the absolute says it does not allow for private roads.
It does say that, uh, public roads are required, however, we would be accepting the fact that these are private roads.
Should we, would that be a special, uh, condition to acknowledge that, you think?
Um, I, I don't believe it thinks that. If you'd like to, to recommend that you can, but I believe that we're accepting the as this situation.
I mean, the last, uh, comment I have, I guess, is with, with something this large and, um, potentially this intensive development, I guess I'd like to see an analysis of, uh, mass transit or off-site traffic generation, particularly from I-85 on Claremont Road. But in this case, I know that MARTA bus runs down Claremont regularly, so there is, you know, pretty good mass transit, but, um, without that knowledge, it just seems like we might want that to be part of the analysis so that, uh, we see how it impacts off-site congestion and the overall transportation system in, in the city of Brookhaven as well.
Can you give us an example of what PC three looks like somewhere else in the city? Like would town Brookhaven be PC three?
Hmm. We don't have very many PC three areas and I, I don't, I believe it's kind of a newer district that DeKalb County put in place, so there aren't very many areas to identify with you that would represent it on a scale. They're very small areas.
Yeah.
Very, very small, very few.
I guess Glenwood Park takes on some of that.
Uh, Glenwood Park is mainly residential.
Glenwood Park.
Uh, Glenwood Park.
It's higher density and it allows 120 units per acre residential, uh, as much density in the mixed-use center. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a beautiful district, but it's really a pretty high-intensity mixed-use center. And I, again, I have no problem with the concept, it seems appropriate probably here.
And I agree with what you were saying earlier when you were talking about this becoming a town center. I think that is part of the, the, the plan is for this to become another town center with some redevelopment components.
The main point though is that, and you can go up to 10 stories of the office buildings, which compensate some of the 10-story buildings there, but there's a lot of one-story buildings on the site, so you take those down and put 10-story buildings in place or so. I mean, I can't emphasize enough what a huge entitlement this is to the property owners. And bless them, they've got property in a valuable location, they've operated. I, I don't have a problem with that other than I think we just need to be, acknowledge that and be careful about the off-site impacts and that, that the requirements, what we're asking for them is well-planned and well-reviewed by the public.
My second question, what is it about this agenda item that makes it a special call? Why didn't this go into the, sort of the normal agenda?
Because to move forward with the annexation process in a timely manner, we, we had to hold the zoning hearing in a special call timeframe. Because the annexation.
To comply with Georgia law timeline for?
Well, when you, you typically, when you notify the county of an annexation, you also notify them as well that a zoning is going to be underway. And so for the, the whole timing and sequence and process of annexation and zoning needs to happen basically on the same night. And to have this move forward this way, we had, we had to have a special call, public for the planning commission.
I'll take a pause and welcome up here. Thank you for being here.
Hey. Love to fly on the wall. Thank you for, y'all being here. Any other questions?
Can you look at? Yeah, um, a couple. The, I'm referring to page, packet page nine, which is a document, this internal, external department, ladies and comments. Brookhaven Police would be responsible for the area shaded and green, de cab.
So page nine, I'm sorry.
Packet, packet page nine.
He's looking at his web package, which is.
Okay.
He's gonna be looking at section seven.
I'm with you now.
Yeah.
That's a web, that's a webpage.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so Brookhaven Police, just to clarify, will be responsible for controlling green-shaded area, de cab, police and de cab fire, everything in white, correct?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Um, Public Works of Transportation have not provided comments. Are they going to provide comments between now and the time of the, uh, planning commission as I expected?
Yes, sir.
I would add that on the transportation side and Public Works, I mean, transportation and the Public Works, again, going back to the comp plan that's going to be done later this year, they're going to be looking at all of the transportation infrastructure within the entire city. So as these type of application comes in, a developer is only required to do but so much as it relates to their property front with improvement. But the city is going to look at a full view of the city's transportation infrastructure every day with the comp plan that's coming out later this year.
That's correct.
Uh, I think that's important to note because with what we're doing now, there's no improvement that's going to go into ground or, or, and I know, Jack, you mentioned by that analysis, I think the only thing they can do now is look at what's in the land use because the actual traffic impact can't be done until you have the intensity of what's going there. So it's almost like the cart before the horse. So until we know who shows up and say, hey, there's an opportunity for us to do a development that we think fall within this zoning, 40,000 feet in the year zoning, um, we won't know the underground until someone shows up with that footprint of what they're planning to do. So I think we're probably a little premature to come up with the, um, lower level traffic impact now. We can do the 40,000 feet in the year, but I don't think that's going to give us much at this point.
Well, also there's a difference in project improvements versus system improvements. And we've got through the comprehensive planning process, that's going to be a larger system approach that you can't really require a developer to do. They're going to be focused more on project improvements versus system improvements. And we're just, we're just on to that. At this point, we're not there for that.
Yes.
I'm curious why we don't get Public Works to opine before the rezoning. I would think the city council would sort of want to know that, that we're not accepting new property into the city that comes along with stormwater issues that are going to be expensive to repair, especially as the intensity of development increases at the site, that, you know.
We did seek a request from Public Works in regard to, um, this application. We did not receive a response from Public Works. A couple of things I would say that you probably are, number one, they're recognizing that there's an existing street network already there. Number two, they, they will be involved in the long-range transportation plan, master plan later in the year. Number three, um, we also just, um, passed a resolution to form our own stormwater utility interface fund and that is not underway yet. We've passed the resolution, so we'll be responsible, um, soon for our own stormwater management purposes and program, which, so, but the.
Maybe we still want to know even.
But, but they'll be taking a look at all that, but they did not require this application.
Do we know whether this is a site that historically has stormwater issues? I mean, there are some notorious spots around Atlanta that are woefully underserved for the stormwater and I don't know whether Century Center is one of them. It's an old development.
I'm not aware of any complaints in my three months since I've been here. Um, I am aware of, of things that we do, do get called out for. With this having been in DeKalb County, I'm not sure if, if things were happening in DeKalb County in that location or not, but, but our team will have to be on top of it.
But that's part of the development application process. It's not necessarily a addition of, of consideration for the PC three approval.
Right.
And I can probably allay some of your concerns. It's right on the, uh, whatever those West Fork or Peachtree Creek, that runs right behind REI and so on. So they're right in and out, uh, an unfold area. So, um, you know, whether it's above ground detention or whatever, they have lots of opportunity to retain as much as they need, so it's not, there's not an impact offsite. So I don't, I can say pretty confidently that there's no stormwater issue coming from this property. That nothing that they can't address engineering.
And I appreciate all those questions and I realize, you know, where you're coming from with that, that in this regard, we're looking at land use and whether or not the land use is appropriate given what is there and what's proposed.
Another question, back to the, just the protective services, um, the, a hundred acres of land and, you know, a good number of buildings and a, a current hotel, um, it's going to have obviously some, some, you know, police and, and law enforcement protection considerations. It's a pretty big chunk of, of land that would be coming into the city. Was that, I think we have, what, 54 officers?
We actually have 50. This would require an additional four officers.
Okay. So the, the, can you tell us a little more about, the departments analyzed this, they've determined they need to have a few additional people? And there's a reference in here about possible grant opportunities because of the federal agencies.
Right. Yeah, the police department did analyze this area, they looked at the, um, activity calls in the area, uh, looked at how many officers we need citywide, including this annex land. Um, and so that the, uh, analysis they, that they performed indicated that we did need four additional officers.
And that's, that's bodies plus patrol cars and equipment.
Right.
I just want to mull some more on this one point because it's what I'm not clear on and that is, um, given the extent of the entitlement we're given the property over here and I can't under, overbeside how much it is in terms of millions of dollars of development potential. The question still is, rather than just give this in this one, this one administrative procedure, should we retain some right for public review once there's an actual development plan that comes back? And so is it either appropriate or is it possible to give them a PC three conditional with one of the conditions being that at such time as redevelopments proposed and they have to create this, this, this very detailed plan, site plan with all the elements that's part of the zoning ordinance, that it gets reviewed again publicly, i.e. before the planning commission, city council?
The only.
It's a major change from what's there.
And I'm not sure if that's, please don't be offended by what I'm going to say. Is that a rhetorical statement or is that a question?
That's a question. I'm, I'm just mulling that with everybody.
So let me, let me.
That's a good thing, whether we want to or.
Let me get this replied then, please. That is that, um, this is a land use question. We have identified from a staff perspective four conditions. Um, and, and this, if this were to be rezoned, it would be like any other piece of property. I realize it's a large piece of property with intense uses, but we must from a staff perspective go through all, all land development proposals. Look at land development, look at stormwater, look at the process, look at the codes before any LDP land development permit or any building permit is issued. And that is a staff function. That is not a function of the planning commission. The land use, whether this is an appropriate land use, whether this should be rezoned or not, is something for you all to consider from a recommending perspective to be, um, carried on to the council for their consideration. And once the council makes a decision on the zoning, it is not something that goes to the planning commission or council for permitting review. It is totally a function of staff.
And I would add to that, Jack, I hear you in wanting to make sure that the community have adequate input with the process. I think the first case that we've had of, of Druid was a good example where the developer did not have to talk to the community, but I think in the good community context, they have been willing to communicate, but legally we can't say to the developer, uh, if they're following what's already in the law of the book, you must talk to the community. I think most, well, let me restate this, a lot of developers are reasonable that they want to be good neighbors and we would solicit that they communicate with their neighbors so that they could have a nice project, but we can't say, um, a condition that we would create if they're going to fall within, if they're already within the law of the land, we can't put that condition on because they're following what's already in the books.
Yeah, yeah, I, I appreciate that and I'm not concerned about the immediate neighbor, neighbors either telling the truth. This is a rezoning of a different dimension than anything else we've done, in my opinion. It's really almost a master plan change because of the intensity that we're going to allow here. And, and again, I think this is probably an appropriate location for that kind of change, so it's not that. But when we, so there'd be very little public input because it's just, it's going to totally fly under the radar. So it's only, we're the only people probably who really can appreciate, if you read the zoning ordinance, what the size of this entitlement is. If I'm a property owner and I have many things, I'm going to be, this is going to be, uh, you know, Thanksgiving, Christmas, all rolled into one for me. So, and I don't have a problem with that, you know? I mean, if you have property well-located and you have the vision, then bless you, that's what it's all about. Nonetheless, because it's of that size, um, it makes me a little anxious to so easily grant this entitlement without more of a comprehensive plan process or whole city process where people really evaluate the impact of this kind of intensity. And so that's all, and I'm just thinking about that, that's all.
Apart from this specific rezoning, I have to respectfully disagree that when we confer new rights on a property owner, those rights come with significant, can come with significant economic benefits that are the result of the rezoning. And I don't think that it's out of place for the planning commission or the council to ask for special conditions outside of this, of the, you know, what's specified in the, in the code in order to grant that special entitlement.
Well, absolutely.
You, you can recommend additional conditions. You can recommend additional, additional conditions. Just ask the staff pass here. And then those recommended conditions then get vetted by the council and before the council makes the decision, because the council may put additional conditions on this as well. But we will, as they take action, we have to make sure that the conditions that are identified are those that are legally capable of being applied to the zoning. So there's nothing that says you can't make a recommendation for an additional condition. That then gets passed, passed to the council for them to consider as well as any condition that they may wish to apply to the property. But we have to make sure when that final action is taken, that they are legal conditions.
What constitutes a legal condition versus a condition that's not legal?
Well, I'll give you an example. Um, you shall dedicate a, uh, you shall build a school down the street. That would be illegal. You shall build bus shelters half mile down the road. That would be illegal. Those would be system improvements, not project improvements. What would be legal would be something, which is not needed here, but would be, um, an analysis of the intersection of Century Parkway Boulevard and Claremont Road to determine whether or not the visibility at the intersection is, uh, acceptable and that it's not providing, um, blind spots for the left turns on Claremont Road. That would be legal because that would be a project improvement.
And that's already in the PC three, all those are listed.
And that's the standard requirement anyway, I'm just using that as an example.
And I mean, all of those things are good. The school is good, the bus shelter is good, but I've seen a lot of cases go to court where the developer says, you can't hold me to that because it's not listed in your requirements for zoning. You didn't, it's not listed that you want me to go three-fourth down the street to that neighborhood that wants a shelter, a bus shelter in the neighborhood. It's a good thing, but that's not a part of the zoning requirement as it relates to that piece of property that developers develop. So I think that would be a good job if you explained it, some good examples of good things. So I think that would be a good job if you explained it, some good examples of good things, but it's not a part of the city zoning requirement that they commit.
Do you have something?
What if we said we wanted a bus stop on the property?
If the bus stop is, again, it has to be in the plan somewhere. So if there's a plan identifying where there's a bus stop to be installed for development at these locations, then the developer has to comply with that. I know.
Do you have something else that you're thinking of that you would like to ask about?
Not as it relates to this particular property. This is sort of the conversation that we had at the last work session where I could, as I said at the time, I've spent enough time in front of planning commissions in other localities. As a developer, where there's been a significant amount of give and take that resulted in a benefit to the community that was in exchange for the benefit that I received. Not personally, but the company. And, you know, we had certain architectural limitations that were placed on a property. You know, in another case, you know, we specify the circumstance. It has to be stack stone and hardy plank or whatever. If we're able to do that, why aren't we able to do that with other items? That's not, the code doesn't say you have to have stack stone and hardy plank.
It just depends on what your proposal is. So we'd have to hear what it is that you want to propose, whether or not it would be acceptable or not.
So it'll have to go back to Susan's office. So the developer shows up and says they want to build a three-story office building, and they want to use siding, plastic siding. Well, they are already something on the books about the type of materials that's to be used or not used within certain zone, zone districts. So then she could say, "No, you can't do that. You have to use hardy plank or brick or whatever it may be." In certain cities, and I've seen this happen, some commissioners, they push down below. And when you do that, you set yourself up for lawsuits, set you may lose. Now, some developers say, "Okay, we'll do it." Some will say, "No, we're going to fight that." You know, you get the lawyers in and they say, "Yes, you can fight that and you can win it." But I've seen an envelope pushed in several cities and counties where, yes, some commissioner would say, "I want you to put a bus stop three fourth down the street. Is it in the zone?" "No." "Will the developer do it?" He may, because he want to get the project done. But legally, we have to be very clear not to approach that gray line where we do go to say something or ask a developer for something that's not listed in the zoning. The community may come up and have a conversation with the developer, which we cannot get involved with. They may say to the developer, "We will buy into your project if you do YZ." We can't get involved with those type of arrangements. He may decide to do it. It may happen. But that's not for the city or this planning commission to be involved with those type of arrangements.
Do you have one that you're thinking of that you'd like to propose later in the open public hearing?
Well, you know, let's say that we were asked to rezone a certain parcel. The developer wanted to build condominiums. And the way the project is oriented, it would result in, for example, you know, the building that fronts the main street to be just a slab wall with hardy plank. And we say, "Well, if we're going to confer that economic benefit to you, Mr. Developer, and allow you to more intensely develop the land than what's permitted today, we want to, we want to tell you that architecturally, we would like to see that side of the building that fronts the street to create a steep streetscape that is compatible with the other buildings along the street." That's not in the code. But I think that's a fair exchange in a circumstance like that. How do we do that?
Do we know that it's not in the code in PC3?
Well, he's not really, he's fully for the PC3. He's using an example for something he would like to do in the future.
I'm trying to understand.
What you have to be careful of is that your role as the planning commission is land use. And as a recommending body, if you feel strongly that you want to recommend that condition, you can recommend that. And then we vet it out between planning commission and council and in the open hearing to determine whether that's a legal condition or not. But there's nothing that, from a planning commission perspective, says that you can't recommend that. But just remember that that's the planning commission recommendation. And just try to always keep the focus on the charge that you have relative to land use. But there's nothing that says that you can't recommend that.
All right, a couple things. Thank you. One, I think it's important that everybody on the planning commission fully understand what the PC3 says prior to the meeting. To Mr. Hubbard's point, entitlement, this is a more intensive set of entitlements. The property can be developed more intensively in the future. Whether it will or not, kind of depends. To Mr. Frank's point, yes, we're conferring a lot of rights onto this property. If you, by way of example, if you drive along South Fulton Parkway from 85 to the Chattahoochee Hills country, you could park more development along that stretch of roadway than Midtown, Downtown, perimeter center, and probably Alpha Red to come by. It will, the likelihood that that ever develops in our lifetimes is remote. But frankly, just because of the millions and millions of square feet that you could put there. So I want to add, from a land use entitlement perspective, it is a lot of development possibility. Pragmatically, whether it becomes reality or not, it's a reflection of economic realities, financing, demand, et cetera. Yeah, the market conditions, of course. So, you know, getting too hung up on the possibility of what the entitlements might provide, you know, it's probably a little bit of, you know, over concern. Because the market, you know, the market forces are going to dictate a lot of what gets built there. But specifically as it relates to, you know, kind of controls of land use policy, page six of the packet, item seven. Whether the proposal will result in a use, this is kind of a test for us as planning commissioners, whether the proposal will result in a use, which will or could cause excessive emergency use of streets, transportation facilities, utilities, schools. Streets that within this development are privately owned, are they going to remain privately owned? Do you know that?
Right now, they are, yes.
Okay. But mitigating measures may be required to offset increased demand for services. Specifically, what does, can you use examples of what that means?
Well, an example would be as, as the increased development occurs, there may be a need for additional changes to streets. In regard to schools, the county has not replied to us relative to schools. There is a portion in here relating to multifamily development, which may increase demand on the school system. I've never seen a school built before you need it. I've seen schools built and provide for that as the, as the increased demand occurs. Utilities, increased social capacity, all of those needs will have to be met.
The bottom line is, nothing's coming out of the ground unless it goes through the whole LDP process and the staff review and so forth. But these mitigating measures, are some of these mitigating measures as they come along through the development application process? Are, are some of those, I mean, I gotta believe that the answer is yes, but?
Yes, the answer is yes. Yes.
That public is going to be, or in other words, mitigating measures? Who determines those mitigating measures?
Well, as you move through, as someone moves through the development process, and as they, example, in number, condition number two talks about zoning, because we don't know which piece they're going to bring in first from which part. As they submit their land development plans, as we see increased demand for services, whether it's the impact on the streets, the schools, utilities, police and fire, and all of those things, we'll have to look at the pre and post hydrology states of development. All of those things are going to be vetted by the staff before any permits is issued. And if there's a need for any type of safety issue or right of way issue or change in any type of transportation component, we're going to have to require that. And we can't allow this to be built without meeting demand.
I'll add to that, Susan. A really good example was, like on a recent development we had, I asked the council, "Are we going to get a comprehensive traffic engineering study that's stamped and sealed by a professional engineer that gives staff the credential of information that's in there, that engineer's license that's on the wall hanging up to protect any study and analysis they perform?" So he may come back and say, "Oh, we need to put a traffic signal at such and such location because of the number of crashes that have occurred there, or the increase in volume based on what the developer is saying is going to be the intensity of the traffic." Or he may say, "A roundabout will work because the volume will still go back through without a stack up of queue." So that professional engineer, that's just one example, will have to do a full analysis in that engineering report, stamping the sealant with his license number on the front page so the staff have that. And they can say, "Okay, these are the requirements that will be a part of the recommendation because they have a full complete study, they have to do the hydrology. I'm sure there are going to be some environmental impact assessment, and that's a part of going to that land disturbance process." Jack, unless, if you have a second question?
Tell them what Adrian said. I hope everybody will read the PC3. In fact, it's quarter to one. I don't know how long we intend to be here, but if we are here, intend to be here till 1:30, I really think we should ask staff to print us out a copy and read through it because to take our discussion to the next level, we need to know what's in the ordinance. And that's key. So I don't know what people think about that.
That's a great idea. Actually, I read it already, but it's a great idea. I think that's, will help.
Yeah, I just think we need that in order to.
I'll hopefully in about 10 minutes.
Okay.
So can we just, at least get a print and take it out?
John's going to take it.
Well, it's available on the web. Everybody can get it at home, too, so.
But that's a very good point.
There is, Susan, the difference between the staff review. I have total confidence in you and your staff to do the review and so on, where the development project comes in. The only reason that, as a planning commission, we might consider a different process at this point is because it's not about the specifics of the development project. It's about the overall scope of the project that we're granting. And the legal theory under which we could create a condition is that the ordinance states, it's very clear that to get this rezoning is you have to submit a site plan as part of your request for rezoning. And it has to be a very detailed site plan. I mean, you read the requirements, and they're listed out, it's over a full page. It's very comprehensive. And so what they're asking for is this rezoning without that site plan. So we're creating an exception to allow them to grant them this rezoning since they don't have this detailed site plan. And they can't, you know, because they don't really have a new project. It's just the way planning.
Do you clarify what you're asking there, is it site plan specific versus not site plan?
This is site plan specific zoning. That's what this PC3 is, if you read the ordinance. You cannot grant without a very detailed site plan. They won't have a detailed site plan. So we're going to grant it, and we can either make it a condition that we accept the site plan in this case, or we could grant it perhaps, this would be the legal theory, to say, "We grant it because we think it's the right concept and it does the best job we can describing what's there. But prior to any future redevelopment, sort of part two of the rezoning comes into play, which is to say, you come back with a detailed site plan, and it also goes, it's public review." And again, the only reason, I guess I'm, oh, I'm repeating myself too much. The only reason that concerns me is because of the total change of scale of what we're granting.
So just to kind of restate, so that I understand the question or the point, that there are, within the code, we have multiple zoning classifications in general as a municipality. Some of those only classifications are site plan specific. Others are not site.
Right, that's correct. Well, Susan, that's correct.
So that's part one of the question, or part two of the, of the giving, so to speak.
The other part is, is this master plan as proposed considered site plan or not site plan?
In my opinion, I understand what you're saying because the PC3 says it should be this. It should have a north arrow, it should have that, it should have this, and this, or all these different details. And the purpose of condition number one is to have the master plan and the pod description here serve as the site plan. And then the more drilled down review would be through the staff process, through the LDP and the building permit process, because those are specific. So staff's intent of condition number one is for the master plan and pod description to serve as the site plan with the execution of the development of the property with condition number two, which also says that the developer shall work with the director for the execution of the plan. It's our intent for what is submitted here to be considered the site plan.
So there's not a developer to take it today. So staff wants to use this master plan to hold the place with a follow-up with the developer when someone shows up, so that we can still carry out the requirements of PC3.
Yes, yes, sir, exactly.
Is that, Jack, you get that? Because there's no developer yet. So what we do not want to do at this point is create a site plan and developer shows up. So we ain't building that.
Right, no, they can't.
Yeah, you want to get a little slower than I'm here.
So it's just a question of what our process is, I think, and what the appropriate role of public review is. That's what it is, I think.
And, and just to go to that end, the public review is in this public hearing. It goes to planning commission and council. Public reviews do not happen for land development permits or building permits. That's a staff function.
So Thursday night, the city has recognized that there's not a development table, so they're using this master plan as a holder until the developer shows up, but they still have to go through their requirements as relates to PC3s. Now, again, my biggest thing is communities should work with developers. We can't mandate that, but I think 99% of developments seem to say they work with communities and looking to have a development that's going to be reasonably accepted. All developments are not going to be accepted. So hopefully, that's something that can happen.
When you say all developments will be accepted by whom?
Well, from most developers in this region, this is just from historical, most developers work with communities to make sure that they're meeting the needs of the community and not being disruptive to the community. Most developers, at all.
But anything that gets built on here after it's rezoned, the public doesn't have a say in it. It goes to staff.
Right.
That's correct. I know the hour's getting late, and I know I want you all to have an opportunity to eat lunch. Do you have any other questions for the staff?
Susan, what I would like to do is, if there are the staff, other questions from the planning commission, if I can compile those and email one email to you at that point.
It's fine to do that as long as we don't get into formulating a discussion or opinion. If you have direct questions, I'd be glad to film those. And again, we do have the additional work session for the members who were not able to attend. If you would like to attend again, that would be Thursday night at 6 o'clock at Municipal Court.
And I appreciate staff scheduling the second one for those that are not here.
You're welcome.
I know you're tired of your car and probably, which city building to go to, but we really appreciate this.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for coming here today.
Any other questions from the planning commission? I really appreciate the discussion, and I think this is very useful for us to have these educational work sessions because it allows us to think about what's happening within the city of Brooklyn as relates to our, what we are responsible for doing. But I really appreciate everyone's input.
It's helping us start our job.
Yeah, there you go.
And I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Stephen, for all being here. And I hope this will work for you. And I will email the schedule for you again. And then Shannon had a good suggestion with a Microsoft Outlook calendar, and you had a different version. So, all right, if you'd like to.
Sure, he's going to bring the PC3.
He's going to bring it back.
We'll hand that out after we adjourn. Any other points before we adjourn?
Uh, let's see. No, I just have a couple of housekeeping.
Okay.
One is, where can I find, I was trying to find online the revisions made to the overlay district. And I couldn't come up with it online.
It is, it is online, but it's not the signed copy. But I can have City Corp send you the signed copy, the signed version.
Okay. But now, I mean, just in terms of city's process overall, once, let's say, we make tax amendments to the zoning ordinances, will that be listed in, under zoning code and like a PM amendment with amendments or something? Or would you try to insert them directly into the zoning code?
At some point, at some point, that will be codified, but we're not there yet. That will be done by the municipal. I believe that's the one we use. But at the moment, all of those items that are amendments were held in the City Corp's office. I think she has been putting some of the amendments on the web. But until such point that, that we reach the complication. that, that we reach the certification aspect, it's a work in progress. And anytime you need something, just ask me first.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's, I'm gonna start out there, each public relative.
Okay.
I'm, I guess, a general question, on the agenda fiscal impact budgeted over/under, is that in the packet?
That is not in there, that's a form letter on our software engine, so we did, we did not address that. That is something that will obviously be addressed in the annexation hearing to talk about the impact on it. But it's not, it's not, that's just a statement, that's a template.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And then the last thing is, for future meetings here, will we have access to Y five, so we can...
Yes, I can give you the, the password right now if you need it.
Okay, sure.
And I'll have it for the...
C O B, guessed, one more.
C O B?
Is that capital? All lowercase.
Okay, the last word.
Guess.
Thanks, thank you.
And the Y five ID is?
City of Brookhaven, no, City of...
Oh, C O B, there it is.
No, City of Greenville. Jack.
Yeah, well, I didn't see Brookhaven on there, but it's C O B, so.
Okay, so he had, John handed out PC three, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am, we will call this meeting adjourned, thank each of you for being here, thank you again for lunch.
Thank you, thank you.